To be held on April twenty second, two thousand and twenty one at one P M. Ms. Shelman with chair, conduct the roll call.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Steen?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Kelly? Mayor Norenberg?
Here.
Here.
And Dr. Mackey?
Present.
So we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shelman. At this time, we'll have our question by Mr. Louis Labatt.
Thank you, Chair, Dr. Mackey. As we go into the weekend, my safety topic for today's meeting is on garage and workshop safety. Safety is vital in any workshop or garage at work and at home. Even the simplest task can cause serious accidents and injuries. Following safety rules, understanding chemicals, and proper usage of tools can reduce the risk of injury. Before using any power tools, be sure to read and follow the owner's manual and the operating instructions. Never work with machinery if you are sick, fatigued, or taking medication. Any one of these factors can cause a loss of concentration, which can cause a serious injury. And finally, housekeeping is extremely important in any garage or workshop. Keep cords and any loose debris that can cause a tripping hazard off the floor. Also, if anything is spilled on the floor, clean it up immediately. Remember, safety is just as important at home as it is at work. Thank you, and remember, zero harm to safety. This concludes my safety message.
Uh, thank you for the safety message. Uh, we have the implication by Ms. Ann Conore.
We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Provide them with knowledge, compassion, and why is counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on the behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Um, next, we have public comments. And I don't think we have any public comments. Am I sure about that?
Yes, so this is Taylor. Hello, everyone. Um, welcome to our April twenty second special board meeting by teleconference. We do always love hearing public input, however, we do not have any registered speakers today. Um, so I will just turn it right back over to you, Chair Dr. Mackey.
You, Ms. Taylor. Uh, then we have, uh, number five, opening remarks by, uh, Vice Chair Janie Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Um, I want to start with, uh, a few remarks. First of all, for me, board service and volunteerism shows the best of the American spirit. People turning towards problems is dead of a way, working together to find community solutions, and more than ever, we must work together. Strengthening the spirit is one of my goals as a Board of Trustees and with the RAC formation. I want to thank you for being a shining example for others to follow. We received two hundred and eighty applications from citizens expressing a sincere effort to participate in the RAC Rate Advisory Committee. It was a collective effort among the mayor's office, city council members, Board of Trustees, and the CPS Energy leadership and staff. Thank you for all your hard work, timely coordination, and responses. Uh, I would like to provide you with a brief overview of what has been accomplished and what will take place today. Uh, the development of the RAC application and outreach took place. It's been completed. The collection of public and review of applications has taken place and it is completed. City council member nominations has taken place and it's been completed. Board of trustee member nominations will take place today. The nominations of the Rate Advisory Chair and Vice Chair will take place today, if I'm not mistaken. Um, Board members of, Board Member approval of all nominations will take place today. Did I make a mistake there?
No, you're clear.
Over with that? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Um, and then, of course, Carolyn Shelman, our Chief Legal Officer and General Counsel, will guide us through the proposed changes to the bylaws. Rudy Garza, the Chief Customer Engagement Officer, will then walk us through the member selections. Then both will guide us to, will guide us through the Chair and Vice Chair nomination process. At this moment, I turn the floor to Carolyn and then Rudy.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez, and, uh, thank you to all the Board members for being willing to meet with us here today on a special meeting. I will say, I can't tell you how happy I am that we have finally gotten to this point. So I'm going to walk you through where I think we are on the bylaws, and, um, hopefully we will be in a position to have some discussions, resolve some of the outstanding issues, and vote to approve the bylaws. And then we get to the exciting part of the meeting, which is naming people to serve on the Rate Advisory Committee. But if you will turn to, to get started, if you will turn to PDF page five, we will go through, I'm going to walk through the bylaws as they were submitted to you in the board packet. And I want to explain exactly the way I suggest we do it. First, you, I've given you, um, a clean copy that is a revision from the bylaws that were submitted to you several months ago. What I have done is take comments from various Board members, people internally at CPS, written comments from Board members, and so I have, uh, divided the things we're going to talk about today into two categories. The first is what we're calling consensus, but just to be clear, this is not a board consensus. This is my assessment based on the comments that I've received as to what I believe the will of the Board seems to be with respect to these provisions. I'll turn through those first. Certainly, if you want discussion, if you don't agree with what is in the, uh, proposed language of each of these sections, speak up, because these are your bylaws. We want them to reflect what you, the Board, want to do. Then I'm going to walk through a much shorter list of just a few provisions where I think, uh, I have made a recommendation as to what is the best, what I think is the best way to proceed, but it is not the only way, and it is not clear to me that everyone on the Board feels the same way. So, uh, there's room for discussion throughout this whole process. Unless I hear any suggestion that we proceed otherwise, I'm ready to start walking through that. So if you would turn to, and please feel free to interrupt me, it's hard, I can't see you, so I don't know what you're thinking, but if there's something that comes up that you don't, um, agree with, speak up as we're going through it. On PDF page six is the first page that has what I've described as the description of the general consensus item. And I'm not going to describe each of these in detail, but I have made changes that I believe reflect, um, what we have discussed as we have met in open session in these prior meetings and in the comments that I've gotten in the past few weeks. And so the first one is in Article Two, Section Two, which I think describes very well what, um, the qualifications are for being a member of the Rate Advisory Committee. Now, I'm just going to walk through these. I'll give you a minute after each one of them. If no one raises a question, I'll just go to the next one. The second one is in Article Two, Section Three, and again, this is a reflection, it's just some cleanup language about how we will select, uh, eleven members, by the, the Board will select eleven members, and the city council will nominate ten members. The third one is Article Two, Section Five, language about how that nomination process will work, and we've gone through it, it seems to work fairly well. So turn to PDF page seven. The next section is Article Two, Section Six. This explains how, uh, what happens if a Board member resigns, uh, committee member resigns or is removed. Article Two, Section Seven, the same thing, how would we fill a vacancy if one were to occur? Article Three, Section One, uh, sets out that the Board is going to select the Chair and the Vice Chair for the RAC. And then Article Three, Section Two describes the duties of the Chair and the Vice Chair. And then finally, of the consensus items, Article Six describes that the Board may amend these bylaws going forward at any time. So looking through the provisions, the clean provisions that you have, is there any one of those that I just discussed that does not reflect the way you would like the bylaws to read? Okay, um, that doesn't, that's not a vote, so when we get to the end, you're going to vote if you change your mind about it, but why don't we turn to the one, the provisions that have a little bit more, um, had to do a little bit more tweaking? And again, I do believe that these are provisions that are workable, and I would recommend them, and they reflect input from Board members, but I don't know that we have unanimous views on them. For the first one, this is on PDF page nine, the first one is Article One, Section Two, which describes the purpose of the RAC. And actually, I think we probably are pretty close to, this may describe exactly what the Board wants the purpose to be. I've tried to track the resolution and the input I've gotten, but if, if it doesn't reflect what you all are wanting it to, to say, please say so now.
Ms. Shelman, I, this is John Steen, just...
Yes?
Is there somebody else that was trying to break in?
No, it's okay, Mr. Steen, go ahead. I will.
So, I know that in the, uh... I'm sorry?
No, I'm good, go ahead.
Okay, in, in the original, um, bylaws, um, there, in that se, we're on Article One, Section Two, it said, it had that the RAC will not review or make recommendations concerning proposed rate increases. And then, of course, now, the way it's been rewritten included among the things that the RAC would do would be to, would be to, um, uh, understand and provide thoughtful input and perspectives regarding proposed rate increases. And I just wanted to, somebody, why did we start with, with saying that, that that would not be considered, and then, and then we've evolved to what would be considered? Just somebody explain that to me.
Okay, um, I think that there was, um, uncertainty, I can say, at, at some point weeks ago about whether, um, the CPS Energy Board were to want to propose a rate increase, which would go to the city council, that they had to get RAC approval before proceeding. And I don't, I don't think that was the, um, intention of the Board or the purpose of the RAC, but I do think that one important purpose of the RAC would be to, um, be briefed on what the, a rate increase, for example, would be, and the purpose of it, and why it was necessary, and how it would affect customers in different rate classes. And so rather than being prescriptive and saying, "They can't do this," I thought it was better to just say, providing input and perspective, uh, and, and not try to, uh, say what the Board couldn't, what the RAC couldn't do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Shelman, I think my, my question, um, I'm trying to follow the flight, has to do with subcommittees? Is it nine, page nine?
Yes, um, we can hop over to there if you'd like, please.
Yeah, so, um, I, and I know we ran out of time, or I ran out of time, and I think what I was open to were working groups. I do believe that there'll be a need for working groups, but eventually, that working group would have to come back to the entire, um, committee for any action.
Okay.
So make sure if, if, if there's a significant difference between subcommittees and working groups.
Okay, for the, let's talk about that for a minute, or let you all talk about it. This is in Article Five, Section One, and there was a suggestion, uh, given to me that having, that this RAC is so important that it makes sense that if the RAC is going to do something, that the whole group should be involved in it, and it shouldn't become a group where a subcommittee would do all the work and other members wouldn't participate or wouldn't be as actively involved. Um, so there was a suggestion at one point that we say that the RAC could not have subcommittees. It has also been, it's clear, this Board, for example, has subcommittees, and I think it is possible that you could have issues that would come up, that you might want to ask a smaller group of the RAC to work on.
Right.
And so whether we call them working committees, or, uh, working groups, or subcommittees, I think it's just a question of, I mean, how many will we want to do?
Yeah, I didn't want, I didn't want, yeah, my recommendation that it's not a subcommittee, um, I just think there's, it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of priorities within this, this formation of RAC, and I do believe in small working groups that may be on special topics, but I, I don't agree with the term "subcommittees." Um, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
But, um, I mean, I'll look to my, my trustees and the mayor to see if they have any feedback on that.
Sure, this is, uh, this is Ron, if I can, if I can add, I, I understand that, and I think the concern is that the subcommittees become too much of a formal, uh, group, but this is, what's structured here in the bylaws is essentially the verbatim what's in the RAC, um, uh, bylaws of the San Antonio Water System, and I think the intent there is just to make sure that any kind of working group, whether it's called a subcommittee or a working group, is subservient to the overall RAC. That, you know, recommendations and all that are made by a group of the RAC will always have to go through the entire RAC if they're formalized. Um, and I'm, I'm not concerned at all by calling them subcommittees. Um, and if it, if it, um, if it is concerning to you all, the terminology, I would just, I would just say something like "subcommittees" or "working groups." I, I wouldn't necessarily take out that word "subcommittee," though.
Those are good suggestions. Why, why don't we do this? I, I appreciate that, that knocks off one of the few things that we need to talk about. Let me go through, highlight the other ones, and then we can summarize and see what kind of motion we have, but we certainly could expand the language in, um, Article Five, Section One to, um, make, to suggest that it can, the RAC can create subcommittees functioning as working groups, or something like that, to make it clear if you want to do that. Okay.
Uh, Ms. Shelman, this is John Steen, before you move on from subcommittees, I may be, may, may have been the one that, and you articulated it better than I did when I, when I mentioned it to you, but I'm, I may be the one that you're referring to that, um, was wondering about the, the creation of subcommittees, and, um, I'd be interested in the mayor's perspective in terms of how that, how that works at SAWs, but a concern I would have is that, it, it, just as, as Ms. Shelman said, these are really important things we're going to be considering, and we want people, uh, we want the entire group to be, be part of it and not, uh, and not have too much splintering where you get people working on different facets of it. And another thing to consider is that, um, once you form subcommittees, there's always a question about what, what, what can the subcommittee ask for, and you get multiple demands on staff, and, um, it could be burdensome that way, but I, I would be interested in how it, how it, how it works over at SAWs. Have, have there in fact been, uh, subcommittees and working groups, and how, how has that worked, Mayor, if you don't mind me asking?
Yeah, sure, um, well, the, the subcommittees have been formed under the RAC at SAWs, um, but their primary form is, or their primary purpose is really just to dig into, uh, in a little more depth, major concepts that the full body might take too long to do, and report back to the full body. They're not decision-making, they don't have any kind of decision-making authority. They can't, um, you know, demand of the full body anything that the full body isn't willing to give. Um, so they're really just, um, a way of the, the, the RAC itself being flexible and being able to accommodate the work that's necessary, uh, for the full body. Anything that, anything that comes out of the RAC has to come out of the full body, though. It doesn't act as an independent or autonomous group.
Ms. Shelman, see, when the mayor explains it that way, then I could, I, I think I could support that. Um, is, can you help us with some language there? And, and Mayor, one of the concerns, concerns I have is that you would have a subcommittee, and they could almost begin to function like, uh, the full committee in terms of, uh, asking, uh, making demands on the staff and asking, is, is that one of the things you're saying that, uh, that they would, that the subcommittee would be limited in terms of the, you know, types and volume of, of things they could request from the staff?
Yeah, I would think so, and I, I would also expect that any, any kind of work that's charged to the subcommittee would have to be done, um, with the blessing of the, of the Chair and the Vice Chair, and if there's any concerns about, you know, resources, um, being used by a subgroup of the overall committee, it would have to be done, um, again, with the blessing of the Chair and the Vice Chair, and, and with the, you know, overall authority given to it by the RAC.
Ms. Shelman, can you add language that sort of reflects that, because that, that's agreeable to me?
Likewise, Secretary Gonzalez agrees with that. I think her staff is pretty, pretty overwhelmed with a lot of big-ticket items, so I agree with Mr. Steen.
I think that's very workable. When we get to the end of this, maybe I can come up with something very quickly to propose to you so that, because I want you to have an idea of what it would say before we vote on it, but I think I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I'm doing it on the fly, so I'm promising something that I don't know that I can deliver on, but I'll do my best here. Okay, um...
Do you have anybody helping you, or you're just doing it all, all, all solo?
Oh, it's all me. No, I've got a couple people sitting around me, but I, we'll, we'll come up with something real quickly. Um, okay.
Yeah, get them, get them, if you like.
Yeah, all, all the minions around you are helping me. Okay, uh, if you'll go to PDF page ten, uh, the next section that I want you to focus on, and I think this is a really important change that, um, I went back and forth on, but I, I really, I'm in favor of this. I don't vote, but I'm in favor of it. Article Two, Section Four, dealing with terms. If you remember, we had originally talked about the RAC having two-year terms, the, I mean, the, um, yes, the members would have two-year terms, and then they could serve three years. And, um, what, there was an alternative...
No, three terms, three terms, yeah.
Uh, three terms, I'm sorry. And we, we, there was an alternative, which has now become the primary proposal. Uh, after discussing it with several people and thinking about it myself, I really, I recommend this, and what it says now is that the RAC will function kind of as a task force, and so the Board will direct the RAC to study a project, whether it be generation planning issues right now, or we're going to have, we think we may need to have a rate increase, uh, in January of next year. We want the RAC to focus on this and think about it and give us some input. And so an issue-focused, time-based, uh, direction will be given by the Board, and, um, I understand that that is how SAWs has operated, and it seems to me that that is a really useful way, um, to do it. So that's what this language recommends. I do think it requires the Board to think about it with help, whatever help we can give you, what you want it, want to direct the RAC to do, but it also means that the RAC will be focused, and they can operate for, you could say they're going to operate for eighteen months, it's, you're not limited in how long you do it, but, um, the focus will be on the Board directing what the RAC should do, and then the Board knowing what kind of input they're going to get and when. So I, I think that is, um, we should open that up to discussion if you all, what do you all think about that?
Well, um, John Steen, so I was thinking, is this an ad hoc committee? Is it a standing committee, or is it a task force? It's, I don't believe it's an ad hoc committee. A standing committee may describe it better, but with this additional language, then it becomes something of a task force. And so I think it, it, uh, reading this, it's, it's potentially confusing, because in adding the language about, um, that was suggested by the mayor, we eliminated a sentence that, that, that it's stated very terminally that a term is, is two years. That, that's not in there anymore, and, and I believe in the, um, draft we're looking at, it doesn't, there's, there's no, um, uh, there's no indication of how long a term is. I think that's been eliminated. The other thing, if, if, if you change Section Four, and now you've got a task-focused, time-limited, uh, rate or generation study proj, project, then that, that is, that, that there's a conflict there with this idea in Article Four, Section One, that, that, that it's mandated that they meet four times a year. So that still reads, a regular meeting will be held at least once a quarter during the CPS Energy Fiscal Year. So, um, I, it, it's, it's, it's kind of a hybrid, and, uh, again, I might, I, I, Mayor, if, if you don't, I, I hope you don't mind me asking you some questions, but I'm, I'm trying to draw on the experience of SAWs. How, how do you resolve those questions that I have? In other words, we're moving away from the idea that it's, that it's, uh, that people are serving two-year terms, and they can serve three consecutive terms, and they can sit out a term and, and then get back on it? And then this idea that it's mandated that we have rec, that the, that the RAC meet four times a year, and yet, um, and yet now we're, with this change in language, we're, we're shifting to more, we're, as you described, as task-focused, time-limited projects?
Yeah, I'm, uh, Trustee Steen, I, I think you're making, um, very good points. Um, you know, the, the SAWs process, which is more of a task-focused process, is really governed by the fact that there is a, a, um, uh, essentially a mandated rate restructuring process that occurs every five years. Um, and so the, the timeline for that and the scope is pretty clear, since this is a new committee, um, and, you know, the nature of what we're doing is, is fairly new, as, as is the, um, discussion about generation planning, uh, which is more of a ongoing discussion at CPS than it is with SAWs, um, I'm kind of thinking along the same lines you are in that perhaps it, it's simpler and, uh, you know, it, it's simpler and more sensible for us to go back to the original Article Two, Section Four language, where it just describes again the length of the terms and the number of terms that can be served.
Yeah, if we do that, then everything falls back into place. We don't, and, and your, Mayor, your, your thought is that to, that this committee would, because again, it's, it's mandatory, but that the committee would be, um, required to meet four times a year?
No, not necessarily. I think that can be determined based on the, on the, the work scope and, and the activity of the RAC itself, um, but in terms, yeah.
Well, then, would we, would, would we eliminate, uh, that language about, about how often they meet, or what's your thought there? And I'm, I'm looking at Article Four, Section One, that has the word "will."
Um, Article Four, Section what, John? I'm sorry.
Se, oh, Section One. It's, yeah, it just says "regular meetings." A regular meeting will, will be held at least once a quarter during the CPS Energy Fiscal Year. The daytime and location of the meeting will be determined in the notice.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that language. Just knowing that, you know, as this rack begins, there's going to be a considerable amount of baseline training and education that needs to take place. I mean, if, as long as we're not expecting them not to meet but four times a year, I think that's workable language. I, I would expect that they need to, to have some regular schedule, but they're probably going to need to convene a little bit more than that, at least initially.
That's what I was going to say, Mayor. Can we say, and I don't know, the minimum, a minimum of four meetings? And then if, of course, if there's a need for ramp-up time, obviously it could be monthly, it could be more than that. But at least have, you know-
I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with how it reads right now, where it, where it's at least once a quarter.
Okay.
Because, you know, in addition to meeting a certain number of times, you also want to make sure they're meeting, you know, at least somewhat regularly. But, you know, again, my, the, the concern that I have about limiting the number of, we're not limiting the number of meetings. I expect that they're going to need to convene more than that. And this language is, this language allows for that.
So I, I, I agree with-
Okay.
I agree with the mayor and other board members that section one, as stated, needs to be exactly the way it is. Because if there's any other additional meetings, special meetings, it's called as a request of the chair. So I think article four, section one and two are okay with me.
Mayor, but remember, we're, we're setting this into place, you know, going, you know, going years and it, going into the future. And are, do you think that, based on your experience with SAWs, there'd be periods of time when the, when the rack would be somewhat inactive? And then, and then they'd be up against a mandatory requirement to meet four times a year?
Well, so, in, in the experience of SAWs, they would be inactive, and, and that's why they only convene, convene based on that scope that's required of them every five years. Because of the fact that the generation planning is a little bit more regular and ongoing than, than it is at SAWs, I would expect that that's not too much of an issue. But, but you also raised a good point, too, John. In, in five years from now, are they going to need to be meeting four times a year? Maybe not. But maybe we need them to meet at least a couple of times a year in that case. I mean, I, as long as the language reads "at least," and we have a baseline expectation of them to convene a certain number of times per year, what's reasonable? Twice? Three times? You know, I, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I would, I would always say, though, that this board has jurisdiction over the rack. So if we come to a point where, you know, it just, five years from now or wherever, it doesn't make sense that they need to be required to meet four times a year, we could always adjust the bylaws at that point.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it reads right now, just for simplicity. But if, if that is a huge concern, I, as long as it reads "at least," rather than limiting their number of meetings, I'm, I can be persuaded either way.
Yeah, Mayor, I've run into that before in other organizations where, where, where there's really no need to meet, and yet you're dealing with a mandatory requirement. And, I don't know. Ms. Schellman, do you have a, based on the conversation, again, putting it on you, do you have a way to, to write it where you address the concerns we're all expressing?
On the assumption that, with respect to article two, section four, that we would go back to the alternative language, that rack members will be appointed to serve two-year terms, I think we could change article four, section one, to read, I guess we could do it two ways. We could say, "A regular meeting will be held at least, once a quarter unless directed otherwise by the board," or we could say, "Will be held at least two times during the fiscal year."
Actually, Carolyn, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you. I, I, I think I'm comfortable with "as is," but what you just said, or "as directed by the board," gives us all kind of a safety valve to, to calibrate what's the, what's the minimum number of meetings.
Okay.
If you're good with that.
Okay.
And, and-
Yeah, I'll accept that, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that sounds good.
Okay. I'll go back and summarize these, where I think, what I've heard, before you get to the point of voting on it. But I think I understand where we are here. Then, the next issue that needs to be addressed is the question of what a quorum would be. And this is found in a couple places, article four, section five, and then article four, section six. And what I have recommended here, based on input, is that we should have eleven members present to constitute a quorum. And that's sixty percent of the twenty-one members. And that if you don't have eleven members present throughout the meeting, you can't continue the meeting. And then I have recommended that, because of the importance of the decisions that the rack will make, that instead of just having a simple majority, we should have a supermajority. And so I have recommended sixty percent there as well. So, wait a minute, am I saying that right? I'm not. Eleven members is not, huh?
Just the majority, yeah.
Yeah, the supermajority that I've recommended is thirteen.
Right. Yeah, in section five, what you've got is, is a, a regular, what, a quorum, right, which is-
Yes, uh-huh, you have to have eleven.
Fifty percent plus, plus one or whatever.
More than half, yeah. Yeah. And then a sixty percent supermajority.
And then section six, what you've got is sixty percent of, of, of the full committee or, or thirteen.
Thank you very much. That's right. And, you know, we, we've looked at different things. You know, we, you could have a supermajority of fourteen, which would be sixty-six percent, or sixteen of the twenty-one, which would be seventy-five. But I think the bottom line is, what we're wanting is to make sure that people participate, they come, and that when votes are taken, that a large enough group of the rack votes in favor of something for it to proceed.
This is Trustee Gonzalez. I'm in favor of that. I think I've had several conversations with the mayor's office. I think we're both in agreement that we want to make sure there's a significant amount of participation in voting. So I'm in support of that.
Ms. Gonzalez, would, would you support requiring that sixty percent supermajority per quorum to meet? And one of the things that we, sometimes people say, well, is that being, placing a burden on the committee. But in a way, that's okay with me, because it's important enough that we want, we want to put some pressure on people to go to those meetings. That's the whole purpose of it. And-
Well, yes, sir.
Sometimes when you have a supermajority for a quorum, the chair ends up calling people and saying, "You've got to come, because we need you to get a quorum." But that's good. It, it may be a little bit of trouble for the, the chair, but it's a good thing overall.
Yeah, well, I mean, think about how many applicants we got, Trustee Steen. You know, there was a lot of people who wanted to be on this committee. And so it was a competitive process. And so I believe, again, this is a priority for a mayor, it's a priority for CPS, to work in a collaborative manner with citizens, to find some, you know, future solutions and some current resolutions and a path moving forward. So I do believe we need to be a little strict on this, in this area.
Would you, would you agree to a sixty percent quorum to, a sixty percent, in other words, that would have, you'd have to have thirteen people of twenty-one show up to have a meeting?
Yeah, I, I'm open to that.
Okay.
Well, that's the only issue.
Sure. This is not a hill I'm going to die on, but I will tell you that the, the higher the burden we place for volunteer committees to meet, the, the more disappointed we will be in, in, in those meetings being made. Just because life gets in the way sometimes. And, and again, we do want to encourage that, and I think this is, there's going to be enough interest on this. I, I, you know, it, it only takes six members of the city council to have a meeting. I wouldn't want to place a higher burden than that for the rack to meet. I, I, I would prefer if we just keep it at a simple quorum, which would be eleven, majority of the members. And, and keep in mind, we do have the supermajority in there now. So anything substantive that would come out of the rack in terms of a decision or a recommendation, still has to, to meet that higher bar that Trustee Steen is articulating, which I'm in favor of. But just to have a sit-down and meet and, and go over materials and all that stuff, I would still prefer if we kept it at a quorum.
By the way, has, has, has Trustee Kelly joined us?
Yes, I have.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Kelly.
Good to be in the meeting.
Well, this has been good discussion. Why don't, let me go back and see where I think, what I have heard. And we have some language to offer. Thank you to Xander Pulis, who's sitting next to me. He's come up with some language that might work on the subcommittee issue. But let me just see where I think we are. And then, of course, if the board is ready to vote, then what we would need would be a motion to approve the bylaws with whatever changes we discuss. But I think that the language in article two, section two, I'm sorry, let me go back. I'm on the wrong page. Article one, section two, the purpose, I think we were, I, I didn't come up with any language to propose there. If someone wants to propose a change to that, we can, we can do it. Article two, section four-
No, I had to ask, I, this is John Steen. I'd ask a question about that, and you answered it to my satisfaction.
Okay, thank you. Article two, section four, I believe what I heard was a general feeling that we should go to the alternative language, which is the original language we had in the bylaws, so that rack members, rack members will be appointed to serve two-year terms. And that, that would be simple to add that in there. The quorum, seems like there's-
Oh, Carolyn, Ms. Schellman?
Yes.
I think, I think that, that what the, I believe what the mayor was saying in article two, section four, would be just to go back to what it said before. I think that's what he said.
Right. That's right. And it's on, on page ten of the PDF, that language is there.
Yeah, so it, I think it's, it's rack, anyway, you could read that to us if somebody wanted to-
Okay. I will do that. It says, "Rack members will be appointed to serve a two-year term, and rack members will be eligible to serve no more than three consecutive terms. The CPS Energy Board of Trustees may reconsider a member if he serves a total of three consecutive terms or an additional term after leaving the rack for at least one term."
Mayor, is that, is that, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that was just, again, the original article two, section four language?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that's quite all right with me.
All right.
Okay, then if we go to article four, section five, which you're just talking about relating to the quorum, there seems to be interest both in leaving it at eleven and some discussion about increasing it. Mr. Steen, are you comfortable leaving it at eleven for meeting forum, or do you think we ought to change it?
Oh, I think, I think the mayor's, there, there are really two, two ways to look at it. And the mayor articulated very well the other way to look at it. I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in on it.
Okay, if not, why don't we assume right now that what's on the table is a quorum of eleven? And I didn't hear any objections-
In other words, just leaving it like it is?
Yes, sir.
Leaving it like it is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Leaving it like it is. And then in article four, section six, I didn't hear a strong indication that supermajority should be anything other than sixty percent. So that's leaving it as it is, unless someone feels otherwise. Okay, there are two other things then. Let's go back to, one is, let's go back to article four, section one. And the discussion that we had, I think, resulted in some language like this. If you look at the language and follow what I'm saying, "A regular meeting will be held at least once a quarter during the CPS Energy fiscal year, or is otherwise directed by the board. The date, time, and location of the meeting will be identified in the notice." Does that address what you all were discussing?
I'm good with that language.
I am, too.
Okay. And then finally, on the question of subcommittees, what we were talking about was trying to give a little more structure to what a subcommittee can do, to make it clear that the rack itself is the, has to be the established, the guideline for the subcommittee. So let me read you what, if I can, what Xander has written. And this is in article five, section one. "Subcommittee formation. The rack may create and charge subcommittees, parentheses, functioning as working groups, parentheses, as needed, to further study matters in more detail. Subcommittees may seek assistance from CPS Energy management consistent with and no greater than the scopes of their charges. If so charged by the rack, the subcommittee shall make recommendations to the rack, which will in turn make decisions regarding the recommendations of the subcommittee." So what that's saying is, the subcommittee can ask for help, but it can't, they can't be asking for anything that's greater than whatever the scope is of the charge they were given by the rack itself.
I've got a suggestion that I think the, the mayor might agree with and others. But I'm wondering if, 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 if there could be language, a sentence inserted in there, if there was an issue about that, that it would be resolved by consulting with the chair and the vice chair of the rack?
That would be fine with me.
I think somebody brought that up. I can't remember who. But I think that's a, a pretty good check on that, which is, if the staff was, was wondering, we've gotten a demand to, to do X, and they're, they're just saying, what should we do? I think that would be helpful, that there's, that, that they would go back to the, the chair and the vice chair, and, or maybe just the chair. And just, just somebody to, to say, "Is this okay? Should we go ahead and produce this?" or whatever.
I think that makes sense, Trustee Steen. And, you know, if, if that's the concern that we get, too many cooks in the kitchen, I'm fine with just the chair being consulted by staff if there's a question.
Okay, give us just a minute. I'm writing, and Xander's writing, too. Oh, good job. Here's what, here's what Xander suggests. After, the language we proposed to put in a minute ago was, "Subcommittees may seek assistance from CPS Energy management consistent with and no greater than the scopes of their charges." And here's the new language. Any issues resulting from the request for assistance would be resolved by consulting with the rack chair. Or we could say, we can reverse it and say, "The rack chair shall resolve any issues arising from requests of the subcommittee for assistance."
I, I like the first version better.
Okay.
In other words-
Any issues resulting-
Yeah, if, if an issue arises, and then we're telling how it's resolved.
Okay. Good. Any issues resulting from the request for assistance would be resolved- Any issues resulting from the request for assistance would be resolved, will be resolved by consulting with the rack chair. Does that address what y'all are thinking about?
That's good by me.
Good for me.
Okay, let me look. I believe that that addresses the issues that we had. So with that, um, no, sorry.
I'll move approval of the rack bylaws as amended by the board here today.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a second by the mayor and a second by vice chair Gonzalez. At this time, we have any more discussion? If no more discussion, then we'll go ahead and have a vote. Ms. Shelman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Present.
Is that a yes or a no, or an abstain, Mr. Kelly?
It says I'm present.
Okay. Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
And Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
That motion passes with four votes in favor, the bylaws is amended, and we will get good copy out to each of you quickly. But I'm very comfortable that you've ended up with a good result. And thank you all very, very much for the work you did on this.
Thank you, Ms. Shelman, for all your work on this and getting this done. This time, we'll move to item number seven, rate advisory committee, rack member selection, and that'll be Ms. Gonzalez.
That actually would be Rudy.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey and trustees. I am here today to lay out where we are on the nominations made to the rack for your consideration today. Our objective today is to talk through, I want to talk through the process of how we got here and present the slate of nominations to the board for consideration. On PDF slide twenty, we're going to talk about the timeline of this process. I'll walk through the process as well, and then we will focus on the members themselves. On PDF slide twenty-one, as you're aware, we extended the period of, the application period for two weeks as a result of the February winter storm Uri event. And we have still been able to get back on track and bring this slate of nominations for you today for consideration. So we hope that with your favorable consideration, we will be able to vote on the twenty-one members of the rack today. PDF slide twenty-two, the vice chair Gonzalez walked through, you know, our rack process, what we've done and where we are. So I'm not going to deliberate, you know, repeat that. But I wanted to just reinforce, I think we had a very good process that allowed us to get here today. If you join me on PDF slide twenty-three, the council member nominations went very well. I want to thank the council offices for their participation. I know in the, in the packet that was sent out, that was posted with the notice of this, this meeting, District Nine's nominee was not in that packet because we were still working with Councilman Courage on his nomination. We have since received that nomination. It's Ann Marie Nicolich. She is an employee with the Child Clarity Guidance Center, I believe. And so we certainly appreciate all ten district council members providing us with their, with their selections. I won't read through them, but you can see that we have, I think, a very nicely, you know, a diverse group of nominees from our council members. And multiple members of these nominations also have CAC experience. We've actually got two former Citizens Advisory Committee members, as well as one existing Citizens Advisory Committee member that is, that is being recommended for appointment. So we're, we think that will provide a lot of context and experience for CPS Energy issues from, you know, from that perspective.
Oh, Mr. Garza.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garza, this is John Steen. Who are those three that you just mentioned that either were on the CAC or currently on the CAC?
Yes, sir. The nominations for Districts Three and Six, Lulu Abitua and Al Rodriguez, are two past CAC members. And the applicant, the nomination for District Five, Andy Gasteel, excuse me, I'm sorry, Peter Ownafree is an existing CAC committee member.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. If you join me on PDF slide twenty-four, once the council members' nominations were received, we then provided a very sizable binder to all the board members with the, with all the nominees, all the applicants, excuse me, and gave you time to run through and make your nominations as well. So, and that included both the nominations from each council district inside the city of San Antonio as well as those that were received outside the city of San Antonio. So if you join me on PDF slide twenty-five, this is the slate of the ten nominations made by the board. And again, we thank you for your timely response to our request for your consideration. If you, and I'll talk about the eleventh nominee. The eleventh nominee was chosen from your, your third prioritized nominations made. We really, staff used that nomination, that last nomination to really try to get a very good mix and balance of diversity on the board. And so our recommendation was based primarily on what we thought was, you know, to be improved in terms of our demographics. And so, so we did, and I'll, it's on a subsequent slide, but we did select Anita Ledbetter as our recommendation for board consideration based on the need to add another female to the board, yeah, to the committee, excuse me. If you join me on PDF slide twenty-six, you look at the diversity of the committee, these are just some stats that we thought were important to point out. Seventy-six percent were male, twenty-four percent female, fifty-two percent were minority, thirty-eight percent were non-minority, which is pretty much an identical reflection of the San Antonio community. Seventy-six percent were within the city of San Antonio, twenty-four percent outside the city of San Antonio. That is also a very accurate reflection of our customer base. Our customers are about seventy-five percent, you know, and twenty-five percent outside the city. Thirty-three percent reside in Quadrant One, nineteen percent Quadrant Two, twenty-nine percent in Quadrant Three, and nineteen percent in Quadrant Four. So that gives us, I think, we think, very good geographic diversity as well. If you flip to slide twenty-seven-
Oh, Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir, trustee Steen.
Yeah, I'm looking at the board handout, and I'm thinking that what happened is that since you sent this out, you've added that eleventh member that you talked about, Anita Ledbetter.
Yes, sir. We updated our stats.
We added, we added the, the person that Councilman Courage put forward. So I'm looking at an old version of that. Could you give me those percentages again?
Yes, sir.
You know, the male, female, minority, non-minority, all that.
Yes, sir, I will, I will, I will go a little slower. Yes, sir, I will go a little slower this time. It's seventy-six percent male, twenty-four percent female, sixty-two percent minority, thirty-eight percent non-minority. Seventy-six percent live within the city of San Antonio, and twenty-four percent are outside the city of San Antonio.
Yeah, those numbers change too much to just, I think, to be based on two additional individuals. But anyway, what you're giving me is, in fact, the percentages for the twenty-one people, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, I must have an even older list. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. We did want to show you a highlight of the zip codes that the twenty-one nominees represent. As you can see from the math on PDF slide twenty-seven, the only zip code that was missing from here was, I think, seventy-two-three-zero, which is Councilman Courage's pick. It's just kind of, you know, right there in the middle, just north of Loop Four Ten. So we've got a couple of zip codes that have multiple, actually, three zip codes that have multiple picks in it. But we still believe we got the geographic diversity that we were looking for. We just wanted to show you that kind of by zip code map. PDF slide twenty-eight, here's just a diverse, a diversity look in the council member nominations. So I won't read through those, but these factor into all the information we just presented, and we wanted you to see that view, along with which quadrant they're in. And then if you join me in PDF slide twenty-nine, same look for the trustee nominations. The last nomination that says all, that was Ms. Anita Ledbetter, who we chose from your group of alternates that you provided as well. So if, are there any questions?
Mr. Garza, we just went through the bylaws where we were talking about, about wanting not only, you know, geographic diversity and what have you, but also people that, from different walks alike, small business owners, large business owners. Tell us about that as you look at the list of twenty-one.
Yes, sir, you know, I think when we look-
Give us a feel for that, in other words, what type of professions, that kind of thing.
I think we've got a really great, a really great group of professional backgrounds. We've got, you know, engineers of all types. We've got folks that develop our community and are in the real estate area. We've got, we've got, you know, former retired military that are in this group. As, you know, we've got, you know, of course, you know, former councilman, Mr. Reed Williams, is, you know, brings that, that policy background to the table. We've got, certainly got folks that are interested, whose interests are on the environmental, from the environmental community that are represented, as well as multiple nonprofits that, we had a lot of nonprofits that were interested in participating, and we were able to get a couple of those. And I believe we've got a couple of folks who are very active in our chambers that are also represented here as well. So when, when we took a look at the background, from a background perspective, we thought, you know, we ended up in a pretty good place.
Good, well, I know that, I know former Councilman Reed Williams has had a distinguished career in business, but I saw where he self-identified as a great farmer.
Yeah, we thought that was pretty cool.
And then we also have a musician. So I do think that, that that was achieved, just the kind of mix of people that we want. So good work on that.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Do we have a motion to approve the twenty-one members of the rack?
So moved, Dr. Mackey, this is Ron.
Okay, we have a motion by the mayor, Nuremberg, we have a second?
Ms. Gonzalez, were you going to second it?
No, no, I was going to let my trustees go ahead and do that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second it. This is John Steen.
Okay, Mr. Steen, second?
Thank you.
Okay, we have any more questions? If there's no question or comments, at this time, it's-
Would you like for me to call the row? I will do that. Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
The nominations are approved.
Thank you, Ms. Shelman, for that right there. And thank you to Mr. Garza and Ms. Gonzalez for working on this and getting all of this together. We appreciate your, your hard work on this. As we move on to the number eight, the last one is the rate advisory committee chair and vice chair selection. If it's okay with the board, we need to break this up into two nominations. We need to have a first, a nomination for the chair, and a second, a nomination for the vice chair. Start with just the chair by itself. So what I'm going to do is open the floor for the chair, and there's a list of names that will be appropriate for the chair. If you go back and look at the data, if someone would like to make a motion, and then we can vote on them individually.
Chairman, this is Mayor Nuremberg. I'd like to make the motion for the chair, and I'd like to nominate Reed Williams as chair of the rack.
Okay, we have one nomination, Reed Williams. Do we have any more nominations?
So, Dr. Mackey, I know that a nomination doesn't need to be seconded, but sometimes people second it to show support. And I'd like to second the mayor's nomination and to show support for Reed Williams.
Okay, thank you there, Mr. Steen. Okay, do we have any other nominations? Okay, we have a first, by the mayor, Nuremberg, a second by Mr. Steen. Ms. Shelman, would you go ahead and call the row, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Steen?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Yes.
And Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
That confirms the selection of the chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we have up the vice chair. Do we have any nominations for the vice chair?
Yes, this is trustee Gonzalez, and I would like to nominate Eloisa Portillo Morales.
Okay, we have a motion, the vice-
And in line with trustee Steen's, second in the previous, I'd like to second the motion for Eloisa's vice chair.
Okay, we have a second by Mayor Nuremberg. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second motion by Mr. Garza.
Dr. Mackey, I'd like to nominate somebody if I could. This is John Steen.
Okay, excellent.
All right, I'd like to nominate Lulu Abitua for the, for the position of vice chair. And just a little bit about her, she resides in District Three, and is councilwoman Rebecca Villagrante appointee to the rack. She's a small business owner. I think her business is called Blink of an Eye Photos and Events. And she's a graduate student at Saint Mary's. She's an active nonprofit volunteer, notably as a co-founder of the Cesar Chavez Legacy and Educational Foundation. Importantly, for purposes of this nomination, she served with distinction for six years, from 2011 to 2018, as a, as a member of our CPS Energy Citizens Advisory Committee. And this means that she can hit the ground running as far as understanding how CPS operates and the complexities of the business. I think she possesses the attributes to be a leader of the rack. She's congenial, collaborative, open-minded, a good listener, and a consensus builder. And notably, as we sought, and I think succeeded in creating a diverse committee, Ms. Abitua would bring diversity to the ranks of the leadership of the committee. And so I'd like to put her name in nominations.
Okay, we, we have two nominations, okay? We don't have to have a second on it, but we, Ms. Shelman, we would have to start out with the first nominations and see if they get the number of votes before we move to the second nomination. If that doesn't get the votes, then we'll move to number two. Am I right about that, Ms. Shelman?
You know, I am not sure, but that sounds like a good way to proceed.
Okay, we'll-
Ms. Shelman, Ms. Shelman, rather than, rather than putting us in a position of voting no on somebody, could we do it, could we possibly do it another way, just to cast our vote for one or the other?
Yes.
Would that be all right, Dr. Mackey?
Okay, I don't, I don't, I don't understand it. Okay, I don't, I don't understand, they have to explain that to me. Because I'll go with the first one and see if they get the votes. And then if they get, if the first one gets the votes, then we don't have to go through the second, we don't even have to hold on to the second one at all, the first nomination.
Well, it just, it just means that some of us possibly are going to have to vote no against somebody when it'd be easier just to be positive and vote for somebody, that's the difference.
If I can offer a suggestion, we've done this unfortunately before with a lot of different city council appointments. But we would go with a roll call vote, and the trustee would indicate the name of the person they want to support. And if any of the names fail to reach a majority of the trustees, we would go a second round with the name that had the most. Or the name, or if, in the case of more than three, more than two names, we would take the, you know, we would eliminate one at a time essentially, and keep doing roll call votes until we have a single vice chair with the majority of trustee support. I think that will accomplish what Dr. Mackey and trustee Steen both want to do, and not, you know, not put us in a position of having a vote against somebody. Before we take a vote, though, I do want to speak in favor of Eloisa. So let me turn it back to you, chair, and let me know when I can do that.
No, if we still do that, then you still going to have to vote no against someone, or not vote for them. Say for instance, you bring up one name, the first name comes up, so what do you mean? Number of votes, board members have to vote on any one individual? And then you bring up the other one, and then the other one only get a certain amount of votes, then you still going against the grain on it. But I'm fine, whatever y'all want to do, I can support that. I don't want to make this a headache.
Dr. Mackey, there are just five of us, and so as she calls the roll, we either vote for one or the other of the nominees. I think it'll, I'm guessing it's going to be decided in the first round because there are five of us, but anyway.
Ms. Schellman, you understand that you're going to call each name, and we'll pick one individual, and then that's the one that get the most votes, get it, right?
I think that's a very good way to do it.
Okay, let's go with Ms. Schellman, if you would go ahead and call the roll.
Well, I believe the mayor wanted to make a statement.
Okay, I didn't hear the mayor, I'm sorry, mayor.
I can't, Dr. Mackey, I can't wait till we can all be in the same room again. But no, thank you, I just wanted to speak in support of Eloisa Portillo, who I've gotten to work with directly. She was an outstanding member of the city's team in the Office of Sustainability for a number of years. I've also gotten to work with her in the context of ACOG. She has been a voice of expertise on transportation issues. She's a trained engineer, as well as in business management. She has almost two decades of service in various aspects of climate planning, and energy and sustainability, and city planning. So I think she would be an incredible asset in leadership for this RAC. And the balance of her experience with Chairman Williams, I think, could be very powerful. I also want to say, and that's not with any detriment to Lulu, who I also admire and appreciate in her work, and nobody loses in this vote because both of them will be part of the RAC going forward. But I just think Eloisa just has an outstanding amount of experience to bring to this, so that's why I'm supporting her and Vice Chair Gonzalez's nomination.
Okay, Ms.-
And mayor, mayor, I would echo what you're saying in the sense that I'm just supporting a different person, but yes, I have regard for Eloisa Portillo Morales, and she, as you said, both of them are going to be part of the committee, and so we'll just see who gets the most votes.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. Hey, I think we just have a slate of good candidates, and I don't think we can go wrong whichever one gets the most votes, so just some good people being nominated. So thank you all, both Mayor Nuremberg and Ms. Steen, for the nominations. At this time, Ms. Schellman, would you please call?
Yes, sir, I will. And just for clarity, when I call your name, please indicate whether you would support Ms. Portillo Morales or Ms. Abitua. So I will first call on Mr. Steen.
Ms. Abitua.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Portillo Morales.
Mr. Kelly?
Abitua.
Mayor Nuremberg?
Portillo Morales.
Dr. Mackey?
Portillo Morales.
There is a majority of the board is in favor of Ms. Portillo Morales.
Uh, thank you, she'll be, Ms. Portillo Morales will be the vice chair. And next on the agenda, we have a motion to thank, and thank everyone for their participation in today's meeting and outstanding job by all board members, appreciate your hard work and your dedication, and thank Ms. Gonzalez for leading this, and she's done a tremendous job. And now we ready to adjourn the meeting, we have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, Dr. Mackey, I just wanted to mention, Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Oh, we plan to hold our first official RAC meeting sometime in May. And again, I just want to congratulate everyone and thank the board of trustees and everyone else, the mayor's office, all the citizens who applied. This is a very competitive process. Again, we're looking forward to working with everyone. And again, our first meeting will take place in May. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, and I also want to reiterate thanks to trustee Gonzalez for her very hard work in putting all this together for the board. And also, Carolyn, thank you for your assistance on this as well.
Quite welcome.
Before we adjourn, I also want to compliment Carolyn Schellman. I, that was potentially a very difficult task to try to work through those bylaws, and I think you've done a good, really good job on there, and a great job today on navigating the whole thing.
Do we have a second?
Thank you, that's nice.
We have a motion by the mayor, do we have a second? To adjourn?
A second, John Steen, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Steen, mayor, second the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, meeting's adjourned, thank you.